And then hopefully, a good portion of the time, we'll be discussing a public workshop that this group will be working on planning for sometime in October. So we'll have to figure out a date and time for that. And then any other business, and we'll adjourn just before seven, so the Planning Board can resume their other business. Okay. So.
We still have three.
Lana, can you? Agenda. So we'll just go around the table and introduce yourselves. I'm Alyssa LaRose. I'm a land use planner at the Franklin Regional Council of Governments. I've been working with the Planning Board in Deerfield to develop this plan, and it's being funded through district local technical assistance money, which comes through the state from the Department of Housing and Community Development. So the plan actually needs to be wrapped up by the end of this calendar year. That's our timeframe. You want to go, Dick?
Dick Kalashewski, Deerfield Building Inspector.
I'm M.J. Adams. I'm with Franklin County Housing and Redevelopment Authority. I'm here. We administer the housing rehabilitation, community development block bans for the town, and I'm also working on some elderly housing needs study here in Franklin County with a specific focus at some of the South County communities.
Betty Turner, Chairperson of the Deerfield Group, of the Council on Aging, and also the Triad, so that we try to work together with the seniors and coordinate their needs.
Ralph Haley, and I'm Chairman of the DPW New Garage Facility, and also on the Finance Board.
Congratulations, it's going to be a great facility. It's going to be a great facility. It's very impressive.
Thank you.
Anyway, Lynn Rose, Planning Board, apologize for being late. It's back to school. We're not back yet, and we're working.
Oh, I'm Rachel Blains, sorry, Planning Board Member.
I'm Paul Ellis, Planning Board.
And Betty?
Betty Hollingsworth.
Thanks.
Do you want to join us at the table? Would you like to join us at the table? Please.
I'm having a jump on hearing.
Yeah, you got plenty of room.
So I'm going to hand out, did you know at the last meeting, we did something similar where we went through? Just went through some main findings. Last time, we focused more on demographic information. So we talked a little bit about the demographics of Deerfield. The population has been growing in the last decade. And kind of the age, and that the residents aged sixty-five and older is going to be a larger percentage of the population moving forward, so the population's aging, and how that impacts housing. This time, we're going to quickly go through some housing characteristics and trends that focus more on your current housing in town, and a little bit on development opportunities and constraints. And I brought maps, so that we can be a little more visual about looking at the town in terms of where there may be constraints to development of new housing or redevelopment of housing, et cetera. And we want to try to get through this relatively quickly, so if there's questions, we can definitely talk about it, but we might have to move on and, you know, table some things for later, so that we can talk about the workshop. So if you look at the handout in front of you, we went over a little bit of this last time, so I'll try to go quick in the beginning. In terms of housing units, you've had a pretty small growth in number of housing units over the last twenty years, four point seven percent growth in the number of actual units in town, which is kind of small. About seventy-five percent are owner occupied, and twenty-five percent are renter occupied. And the rental portion, you know, rental stock has been decreasing over time in town. Your vacancy rates, you have a low homeowner vacancy rate, which means there could be some pent-up demand in terms of homes for people to buy in town. You don't have very much that's available. Your rental vacancy rate is actually like within what's considered a normal range. And about eighty-one percent of housing units in town are single-family. And that's been a trend over the last twenty years or so. You've mostly permitted just single-family homes. In the last twelve years, you've had eighty-eight building permits issued, which generally does result in homes being built, so that's pretty consistent with what's actually being built. And all of them were for single-family homes, so there's been no multifamily development in the recent years. And also, I talked to Dick about this. He said development hasn't really been concentrated in any one location in town. It's kind of just been spread all throughout town. We'll look at a map in a little bit that shows where some of that new development has been occurring over the last thirty years, and it's mostly along, just along your town roads through A and R development, and some new subdivision. You have about thirty-six percent of your housing stock was built in nineteen thirty-nine or earlier, which is not uncommon compared to other towns, it's older housing. So there's benefits and challenges with older housing that you're probably aware of. But also, older housing can present opportunities for reuse and conversion into, you know, multifamily if they're large, single-family homes. So that's something we can look into more with this project. And then we get into the affordability picture in town. And so just in general, we had, this is when it gets a little tricky. We talk about the HUD income limits. There's a lot of information to share, but generally, what we're talking about is, when we talk about affordable housing, it's housing that's affordable for households making less than eighty percent of the area median income, adjusted for household size. So if you're a three-person household, you're, the income limit is different than if you're a one-person household. And those incomes are set by HUD. And so for Deerfield, you're within the Franklin County area, so it's the same throughout Franklin County. So in Deerfield, about thirty-seven percent of all households fall below that eighty percent median income range, and about twenty percent make incomes below fifty percent of that income range. So that's getting even lower down in terms of the incomes. Senior households in particular need housing options that are affordable at the lower level, you know, you know, lower than just that eighty percent cap. And the data also shows, if you look at this table on this page, that you may need affordable housing that, for younger households, because it looks like they may not be able to even afford to locate in Deerfield in the first place. Right now, it's showing zero percent of householders under the age of twenty-five basically living in Deerfield. I mean, there's a margin of error associated with this data, so that's not necessarily like one-hundred percent true, but this could show that, you know, that it's, there's a barrier to, for younger people to even get into town. And then last time, I passed out.
That's a single householder, though, right?
Right.
So that's one person under the age of twenty-five, living on their own.
Well, no, not necessarily. This, so this chart.
Household, you mean either owner or rent.
Yes. Yes, a household could be owner or renter. And this chart here doesn't adjust for household size, so it's just any, so when you're looking at, say, household, they're twenty-five to forty-four years old, all that means is that the, and M.J., you might be able to help me with this, that the person who's kind of the head of the household is within that age group.
I see.
But that doesn't mean that there's other people in their household that are different ages.
Of course.
Yeah.
Is this generated from the census that goes out each year? Is that what this came from?
Yeah, this is from the American Community Survey, which replaced the long form of the census.
Like every year, you sign up, you have to sign a census thing that says you have a dog, or you have a?
That's a town title.
Yeah, that's different.
That's not the one that's.
Yeah. So this is a survey, and it's, it actually collects data over the course of five years, and then like, I don't know what you call it, aggregates it kind of, so it's trying to, it collects data over, it keeps moving each year. So this is two thousand seven through two thousand eleven. Next year's will be two thousand eight through two thousand twelve. So they're trying to collect enough of a sample size, basically.
Just one year, right?
Yeah. And so last time, I had passed out a chart, and I'm going to, I'm going to give you another handout, and I'll tell you what page this is on. But I wanted to have spoken more on it this time, because we didn't get a chance.
I just want to say what's useful about this second-to-last bullet on that page is so many people think that this is about people coming from out of town, not being able to be here, but when you show a policeman, which is, you know, a municipal job, couldn't afford to buy, then it shows you it's the average person. It's not.
Yeah, and that's what we're going to look at now. So if you go to page, I think it's twenty-five.
But I just want to say, I want to highlight that, because I think in the past, when we talked about affordable housing, that's what comes up, and that's what we're up against.
So if you go to page twenty-five, there's this chart. So that's what this second-to-last bullet is referring to. I looked at recent home sales in Deerfield, so actually, actual sale prices for homes and condos, and then looked at rentals out there and what they're renting for, to come up with the numbers on the left side, which are estimated monthly costs for those different options, and then what the income you would need, based on what's considered an affordable housing option for you. So the page on the back, it kind of goes into the details of how, the methodology for coming up with that, so if you're interested, you can look at that. But this is just, it's supposed to be a general kind of idea of what you have in town right now. And so I used an example of the average Deerfield Police Patrolman salary for two thousand thirteen, which is forty-seven thousand six hundred and seventeen. So that would be a gross annual income. And that income, if you're a single, you know, single-income family, would be really difficult. It would be tough to find anything that you could purchase in town. You would be able to rent a two-bedroom, maybe a three-bedroom apartment, but it's just showing that single-income households, it's going to be tough finding housing that's affordable in town. And these are some other examples of kind of typical wages in the area, either in town specifically, or in kind of Franklin County. Are there any questions, or any other discussion around this?
Takes a little while to absorb this. So this is the first time you've seen it. Don't be surprised that it might be looking. Northampton's used this type of format for a number of years, and it was really helpful in terms of getting, exactly making the point that you were referring to.
Yeah.
That we tie it to local wages of people who we see every day on the street, and it becomes very much more real.
Right, that it's not, you're not getting this migration of people from Springfield from all over, and that was like the fear, so it's dispelling that fear factor. Yeah, the myth, yeah.
Yeah, before, we had one, one or two town officials that thought it was just other people coming in from other towns.
Right.
And you couldn't get it across to them that it wasn't.
So let me see, where was I?
Part of the challenges here is that you're looking at, you know, wages, assuming that there's only one person working in the household.
Right, really, which most people make it up by having two incomes in the household, and creating whole other issues around where their costs are.
Right, yeah.
So I think that you're, you know, you're really looking at protecting middle-income people as much as possibly can.
Now, what's included in these, either mortgages or rents here?
So for the homeowner unit, so if you're looking at single-family home price or condo sales, that would be the mortgage interest and principal, the mortgage insurance, property insurance, taxes, all of that. It doesn't include utilities. That would be separate, but all of those plus.
Wow.
And for rental, it would be your rent plus utilities. That's what is included in the cost. And that was tough, because when I'm, when you're looking at rental, actual rent out there, it varies. Some include utilities, some don't. So again, this is kind of just a general.
So I guess I was wondering, you know, that at face value, the three-bedroom rental is more than purchasing a home, so I was just trying to get a feeling for why that was.
Right, well, it's more than the median condo sales. And also, when I'm basing this off of a smaller amount of rentals, so it could.
Because they have so many fewer.
Yeah, because there's a lot fewer. In terms of condos, too, there actually was a decent number of condo sales, but I would say statistically, it's the single-family home prices are going to be the best, because that you had.
Best indicator.
You had like fifty home sales that I looked at, and so that's somewhat accurate of home sales over the last year.
And any new inventory is then single-family homes, so.
Right. So again, it's just kind of a general thing to look at. Obviously, there'll be variations, and you could find something much better than this, or whatever, but.
Alyssa, with the condo sales, when you calculated, did you include any sort of condo fee as part of the housing cost?
Not for this, even though that would be included, you're right, but I didn't go into that level of finding out what the condo fee would be.
You can really bounce things up sometimes.
That's true, yeah.
Because it looks like that somebody would pay fourteen fifty for a three-bedroom rental, and they could own a single-family home for thirteen sixty-three a month, so I was just...
Oh, well, that's right. That's because, yeah, and that's because of the, there's a variation in the percent, so for the home sales, I used the calculator on the Greenfield Savings Bank website that uses a twenty percent, twenty-eight percent debt-to-income ratio, which is typical for mortgages, qualifying for mortgages. So it gets a little bit, it's tricky when, because then for the rental, I was using a thirty percent affordability. So it's, yeah, you're right, that's true.
It just looks deceiving there. I mean, if somebody could pay fourteen fifty a month, why wouldn't they buy houses?
But that's actually not so unusual, because the fact of the matter is that they can't know that they're going to be able to do that, get the down payment, have a steady income. So it's a very, that's a brutal piece of affordable housing, is that in fact, many times, they could be homeowners, but in fact, the economic harshness of their life, the inconsistency or whatever, it means that they end up paying more as renters.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Actually, you've done an excellent job on all this stuff. I think you're a little bit low on the two sixty-eight of the Deerfield value, and the reason I'll tell you that is probably people don't realize in this room, we've had a few skewed values because of people either abandoned a piece of property, got foreclosed on for not paying the mortgage, so we've had a few of those skewed in, so our value may be a little bit higher.
Where was the two sixty-eight valuing?
We've got, we've got a few houses that are.
Where are you referencing that number?
She has the two sixty-eight median value for the house.
I know, but which page was that on?
I did use medians for the, for those which would.
Probably a little bit higher.
Rule out some of those big outliers.
Just referring to what is number of the rental costs and stuff. The numbers are probably even higher.
Twenty-four.
Even more difficult than.
Median, single, it's just the page, right, right here, flip side of the. It says two fifty.
It's even more difficult to get from here to there.
I see. Yeah, and.
And there's a little churn here. So he's got the median single, this one, pointing at the median thing. It's probably even a little bit higher than that.
Oh, okay, all right, I see. The two fifty, what you think is two sixty-eight or something.
Okay.
Is that what you said, Dick?
Yeah, I think it's a little bit higher.
And actually, that, on that.
That actually makes her, you know, it's even more serious. You've done an excellent job on the paperwork, and I'm like stunned.
Everything she does, she's amazing.
Well, this, like I said, I took this from Northampton. They did a very similar thing to try to show, you know.
I find, I find this, going over this, it's very accurate.
Helpful, yeah.
Yeah, just.
Alyssa, you do go on.
And the final bullet on this, on this little handout that we were looking at compares housing costs to Amherst, Amherst and Northampton. And so compared to those areas, Deerfield is more affordable, but it also may mean that people who are priced out of those communities may want to live in Deerfield, and so that will drive prices up higher as well. So it's just something to keep in mind.
That's already true.
Right, right, it is.
I'm not saying that could be, that is.
Unfortunately, we don't have, they used to do what's called Journey to Work data. The census used to collect information on where you lived and where you worked, so that they could figure out how many people commuted from one community to another. And so the last time we have that from is two thousand. So at that time, in two thousand, you already had thirteen percent of Deerfield workers traveled to Amherst for employment, and eleven percent traveled to Northampton. And those were your third and fourth highest destinations for Deerfield workers. The other two were Greenfield and Deerfield, so. But I mean, it makes sense. You have good access to those.
Oh, yeah, we have great, great.
Creasing numbers of people who are, who are going to Springfield, to Westfield, because they like the quality of life, again, forcing the prices of our, this economy to go.
It's like commuter train.
We've got somebody in town commuting to Albany.
Yeah. That's quite a hike. Oh, and I did have that table on here, I didn't realize, on the next page. So going back to the handout, under that table on page eight, this goes into your current affordable housing stock. So you have thirty-three housing units in Deerfield that meet the requirements to be listed on the subsidized housing inventory, according to Chapter Forty-B, and this is five, one point five percent of your year-round housing stock. And as we've discussed, Massachusetts encourages towns to have at least ten percent affordable housing stock, because if you're under ten percent, you then become vulnerable to a chapter, a comprehensive permit through Chapter Forty-B. So that's one of the reasons we're working on this, is to try to increase your percentage.
That and senior housing, the two reasons, absolutely.
And then, so some of the units are funded and operated by the Massachusetts Department of Developmental Services. The other twenty-four are at Elm Circle. They're privately owned, and they're rental units, and they receive subsidies through the USDA, which keeps the units affordable. And M.J. did some research into this to help me figure out what the status of those units were, and according to what she found, the subsidies should continue through twenty twenty-one, at which time the owners would have to decide if they want to reapply, or they would convert into market-rate units, so you could potentially lose those.
Could I just ask, when you say the subsidy by RDA, like, who said they subsidized homeowner? The owner, or the?
Yeah, let me explain it. When, when they, when they built the units fifteen, twenty years ago, they received a subsidized mortgage from the US Department of Agriculture.
Yeah.
USDA mortgage. It's called a USDA five fifteen loan.
Okay.
And so this is subsidized mortgage. Now, on top of that subsidized mortgage, there are also rental subsidies that are available to everyone who lives there, so that even if the, with the mortgage being subsidized, if it wasn't, if they still had to charge too much for rent to those families, there was a differential that the owner could get to help subsidize those units further, so that they're able to reach down deeper into the range of incomes to subsidize people. I do want to share with you that there's been some changes happening at USDA at the federal level. In fact, there's, we were concerned that the owners might actually decide to exit the program, but we've seen no evidence of that, and in conversations that I've had with the USDA staff, it's clear that there's significant incentives to keep the owners with the units subsidized as they are through twenty twenty-one.
Okay, great.
The subsidized rentals is that, the onus on the owner, or the renter to be part of that program?
It's the owner's.
It's the owner's.
The owner. And the owner is obligated to attempt to rent it to families who meet those lower income ranges.
And then seek the subsidies for rentals.
And you're talking about Elm Circle now?
Elm Circle.
And so what do they have to do to, to be accounted under the affordable housing? Do they have to go eleven years? Do they have to just sign a yearly thing, or how does that work?
In talking with the folks up at DHCD, they say that there was a comprehensive permit that was granted on that, but they have no copy of the comprehensive permit. They cannot be talking about it, and typically, those type of permits are recorded at the Registry of Deeds, but we haven't dug down through the paperwork yet.
That was nineteen eighty-one, to be exact, and.
Before mine.
Records were.
That was more than fifteen.
Records had been moved a couple of times from the other building, the other town hall, so we really don't, can't find anything. It's here someplace, maybe.
What would happen after, like, if it's a, if it's a rehab, it's fifteen years, if it's new, it's thirty years, or whatever? What do you do at the end of that timeframe to not lose the?
That's why we want to find the documentation from the town, because the, in the granting of that permit in nineteen eighty-one, there might have been some time stipulated in there. Now, by virtue of having access to those federal programs, as long as those federal programs are operating there, those will be subsidized units, and they'll count on your subsidized housing.
Okay, that was what I was trying to get at, is how would they determine?
But if at the end of the term, they decide that they don't want to.
Then they don't have to.
Play in the government sandbox anymore, and they terminate their relationship. The question, that's a standing question that I think Deerfield has to be mindful of, is what happens to the lion's share of the units on your subsidized housing stock? And then how does that then put you in a rougher position than you already are on Forty-B issues? I think just to be aware that that's coming down the pike and to plan for it is a, is a good strategy.
I have a person on the paperwork, so.
Well, just for your information, the original owners have passed away, and the property's been passed down to their family. So right now, I doubt if there's any reason for them to pull out in the immediate near future unless something, the subsidy goes away, or something like that.
And that would be the risk, is that there would be something that would happen with the federal findings that's supporting the operation right now.
We're relying, we're relying on the federal government right now. Not local, so, the owners.
Now, do they get a tax break of any kind to the town?
No.
They're on the full value?
Full value, been on full value from day one.
No, the relief comes from the subsidies, the rent subsidies.
Rent subsidies, federal government.
And the mortgage subsidies in the, in the initial stages of.
I'm pretty sure, and you correct me if I'm wrong, I'm pretty sure the subsidy includes, like, paying local taxes and stuff, and that's all taken into account for the amount of money they get for the subsidies. And it takes into account the people's actual income also. So everybody doesn't pay the same.
Right.
Do I understand that's the only affordable housing in town, or?
That's the Elm Circle, and then there's nine units that are through the Massachusetts Department of Developmental Services, and those are confidential units.
And they're in, so we don't know, they're individual.
Yeah, we don't know the locations or anything.
Individuals who've applied, who've.
We, they're, some of them are a single-family.
Right.
Yeah. I can just answer it that way.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So the next section, we'll go very quickly, but we can look at some maps. This has to do with actual development conditions in town, and we're going to start talking about where it might, might make sense to locate, or encourage affordable housing in town. So hopefully, with the workshop that we're going to have in October, that will be one of the things we get out of this, is where do people think that new housing in general, and affordable housing, should be happening? And there's some factors that we want to look at. So I put together a couple of...
Should we, we could go over to those maps, or, I'm wondering if I could get them posted with something.
Yeah, I should have thought of that.
Put it clipped onto here, or...
Maybe just lay them on a table, and we'll stand around.
Yeah, we can just stand around.
Be quicker.
Are we on...
Yes.
I won't be able to stand up.
For those of you watching, we will return in just a few minutes, we're taking a look at the maps. Are you going to leave the maps here if people wanted to come look at them?
Let's talk about the workshop, and just really try to figure that out. That sounds good.
Yeah.
And then we can talk about the...
Well, that's what we did for this.
Yeah. He sent out the other working.
Right, right.
All right.
Now, the next, extra scheduled meeting you have is the 18th.
That's for the senior center, yep. But in terms of this group, we'll need to decide on what time works for this group. So we should look at October for the public workshop, and probably pick two dates, maybe one that we prefer, and then a backup, if that's possible to do right now. And we want to think about having enough time to get it organized and publicized, so...
We need 14 days.
So you want to start with the October meeting first?
Yeah, why don't we do that, and then work backwards?
And that's going to be called the, what planning, what meeting?
Well, that will be the public workshop.
Okay.
So the 14th is Columbus Day, it looks like. I think that's the only holiday, Halloween is the 31st, which is a Thursday.
So you want to pick a main date, and then a backup date, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
It'd be great if you all could weigh in, so, it'd be great if folks were there. We're pulling out calendars to figure out a date for a follow-up.
Well, I left mine at home, because I didn't know there was, I don't know anything.
That's okay. Well, did you put your, did you put your email on the sign-in sheet? Okay, then you'll be...
Send it to me.
I'll just make sure to send you, keep you in the loop.
I'm generally available.
Okay. So for the workshop, is evening during the week generally okay for, for, do you think for the public, or, what's a good time to get people to come?
I think we've done, like, 6 o'clock, or...
Well, the reason I'm, I'm going to question that is, is who do you want to have come to the meeting?
Anyone that...
Well, the reason I'm saying that is because there's a lot of elderly people that won't want to come out after dark, and it's going to be dark.
Well, that's partly why we're going to the senior center this month, so people, so we'll get input from them, and, and we'll let them know about the workshop, so that hopefully, some will come. But if they can't come, at least we'll be outreach-ing to them separately.
Okay, all right. So you want to make it 6 o'clock, and what dates did you think?
That's what she was asking us.
I'm, I'm pretty open, I'm wondering if sometime in kind of middle of the month, I wouldn't want to do it too early, but in the month.
21st that week, maybe?
Sure.
21, 22, 23, 24, 25. Our nights are Mondays, you know, like, each, and I don't know what nights, I mean, we only meet the first Monday, so it's not like...
Well, the slickboard is Wednesday.
I think Monday would be a good night to stick to, even if it's not on our regular meeting night.
Yeah, let's do the 21st.
See, the ninth, we've already, we've already got out, we've already got the second and the ninth are out, right? Oh, this, no, this is September, never mind, we're talking about October.
Yeah.
So the 21st of October, and that's a Monday night?
Mm-hmm. So that would be 6:00 PM, we'll aim for that for the public workshop, and then a backup date would, are Tuesdays okay, are there...
Yeah.
I think Tuesdays are...
So you're saying the 22nd as a backup?
Yeah, and I can check with Casey to see what, to make sure it's available, and if she, okay.
I mean, we could go the weekend before. I think the, the other thing is to go the 14th.
That's Columbus Day.
Oh, that's what you're saying.
Yeah, that's, yeah, the key, yeah.
No, that week is much better, if it's Tuesday, or, or Thursday, where, I don't know.
I can do either one, do you guys have a preference? Mondays, Tuesdays, Thursdays?
I'm retired, I don't care. Five in the morning, five at night.
Look at this shit my kids over to you.
Love that.
Not a Thursday for me.
Okay, so we'll do Monday or Tuesday, we'll see what's best for the town. And then for this group to meet next, I'm thinking, it'd be great, where are we now? We're the 26th of August, so, within a few weeks to meet again.
Okay, so they got the second and the ninth are out, so the next week would be the...
The second and the ninth, the 16th.
How's that sound?
16th of September.
Yeah, for a subcommittee meeting.
Sounds good to me.
September 16th, oh, good.
Okay.
We have a quorum.
Hey, Max. All right.
Wait, September 16th.
September 16th.
At 6:00 PM again?
6:00 PM.
I didn't know we had designated seats.
And I handed, the packet that I handed out that had that large chart in it, that's a draft of the Housing Needs Assessment, so please read through that, and you can either email me, or call me if you have comments, or let me know at the next meeting, but I want to get your feedback on that, that handout, that section.
Do you want to do 6 o'clock, is that a...
That's fine, yeah.
Is your email on?
I might bring my kids.
You know, I didn't put it on, I can just write it down.
Okay, yes.
I handed them on in the last...
Oh, you did, okay.
And I have not.
I literally came from school supply shopping.
Minor, going out the door.
Alyssa, and I'm with the council.
Oh, that's right.
So you can also look on our website. It's F-R-C-O-G.
So that's here, right?
Yeah, I got it, yeah.
Okay, great.
Good, thank you.
That meeting here?
Sure. And I can see, I'll check the availability.
Oh, the 16th, yeah, that's the slickboard, well...
No, that would be Monday.
No, it's a Monday, this is a Tuesday.
Monday shouldn't be.
The 16th? Oh, I got October, whoops.
Yeah, I know the ninth is a special election, so Casey said not to do the ninth, but...
A lot of stuff I do doesn't show.
All right. So we're good?
Good.
Yeah, that was good. Thank you for coming. And again, feel free to contact me with any questions or comments or anything.
Can I have a couple of extra handouts?